Sorry. I was just for this thing for tonight. I think I missed a committee member somewhere. I was trying to mention, I'm afraid I missed.
Catherine, are you ready? Are you ready? Are you ready? Okay. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone to our called meeting tonight. Very happy that everyone's out joining us. This is kind of a long, oh, hang on, Ms. Baker's on the way. We'll just wait just a moment. While she's walking in, I'll just say a couple of things. We only have one item on the agenda tonight and it's kind of an exciting time and sort of good timing that we're having this vote tonight. I'd like to first of all start off, we'll start with Friday night and we'll congratulate our Cyclone football team on winning the conference again and wish them luck Friday night. And then was it Saturday night or Sunday morning when the final decision? And then on Sunday morning, congratulations, Mr. Elliott, for back-to-back state championships for the Betsy Vans. What a great weekend. Take that, you take our academic performance our students have had, it is very good to be a Cyclone. So. Where are the? Well, I don't think we had one of those when I was in school, so that's exciting. That is part of it. Well, okay, touche, touche. I think it's kind of fitting that your program was called Our Town because tonight, the school board and then Thursday night with the city council, I felt like that your performance was kind of a love letter to our town and tonight for us and then Thursday night for the city council, we give an opportunity to send a little love back to you. So this is a nice evening. I'm going to ask Mr. Alexander if he would to lead us in a moment of silence and pledge of light.
Please stand. As we pause for a moment of silence, I would like to ask you to think of the Griffin children, that's Haley and Cody who lost both of their parents in one fell swoop. And also Ms. Cindy Walker's dad, Mr. Wayne Oliver, who passed away today. She works in her finance department. And of course, Ms. Betty Lou Day who had a cardiac concern. She's usually here for the board meetings, but we're hoping she's on her way back. Also, we want to be thinking about those two students who are band members at Tennessee High who were killed in an automobile accident recently. So I know that's a tough thing. One other one survived, I think, of the three that were there, but it breaks your heart. But anyway, if you'll please pause for a moment of silence.
Thank you.
Attention. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberating, and just.
It's time for citizens to speak in accordance with Board Policy 1.404. Anyone wishing to address the board, please come forward, state your name and address. Also, since this is a called meeting, all comments and all conversation in the meeting has to revolve around the agenda items. So just want to make everybody aware of that. Seeing none, it's time to approve the regular agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have one item on the agenda this evening. Item is to approve the capital project committee's recommendation for the EHS campus so that the administrative staff might proceed with the designated projects in the amount of $3.5 million, not to exceed bond monies received from the City of Elizabethan for the stadium, and $1.5 million not to exceed bond monies received from the City of Elizabethan for the band room with the intention to pursue from the accrued half-cent sales tax monies the completion of the TA Dugger Junior High School project within the next three to five years. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I know that, first of all, I would like to thank Mr. Isaacs for chairing the committee. We met several times. It was a lot of great conversation. All of us were there, everyone except Dr. Mesa. Please feel free to ask any questions. We have Mr. Van Hus, we have Mr. Weems, Mr. O'Hare, so we have several people here to answer any questions. But I'm going to ask Mr. Isaacs as Chair of that committee if he would just sort of give us an overview.
Should be glad to. Thank you, Ms. Brewer. First off, I would like to recognize and thank the folks that served on the committee to look at our capital projects and try to help us make a recommendation. It was very challenging. We had a lot of good conversations, a lot of input from all the folks from the committee. Like to thank those on the committee, myself and Ms. Brewer, Kurt Alexander, the mayor, and Richard Tester were there with the city council. And we had the staff, Mr. Van Hus, Mr. Alexander, Coach Wilson, Jason Carter, and Mr. Wright from the high school. And also had a large committee, Mr. Joe LaPorte, who was very helpful with some of the questions that we had. And also like to extend a great appreciation and thanks to the city council for making this happen, making the funds available and making this something that's been going on for quite some time and at least giving us the opportunity to explore these challenges and try to decide what is in the best interest of our children. And also, I would like to thank Jerome Kitchens, City Manager. He attended several of the meetings and had some questions and some comments and also helped us with the decision-making process. Other than that, I would just, you know, the committee met three times. Each time, it seems like we had more questions than answers throughout the process. And also, while I may have to thank Mr. Weems and Mr. O'Hare for their help and provided us all the information and a lot of the answers to the questions that we did have. Appreciate you guys trying to guiding us through this process of trying to meet the needs of our capital projects. But in the end, after, you know, a lot of discussion and I'll be quite honest with you, a lot of it was good discussion, things that we needed to hear and some good, some bad, some pros, some cons. And it was, it was very good, but we, it was very delightful too, though. Everybody was very cordial and it worked out really well, but everybody, I think, got a lot of their questions answered and some of the concerns that they had answered also through the process. But ultimately, in the end, it was a unanimous vote on the recommendation that we've brought before the board tonight. So if anybody has any questions, I'd like to try to do that. Our experts, Mr. Weems and Mr. O'Hare probably have more answers than we do, so as far as what we're trying to do with these projects.
I think you, I have a question. Do I count up here?
Oh, certainly, yes, please.
Okay. Now, I'd like to have a new stadium. I'd like to have a new ball field. I'd like to have a new athletic complex. I'd like to have a new school. And I really would like to have a new choral room and band room, very much. In fact, six years ago, I think it was Ms. Baker and myself went out to the high school and looked at that and it was so bad that I felt badly for the teachers and the students. But they have made a few improvements just lately to that room. However, I do want to see a brand-new band room. And I'm not just saying that because Mr. Elliott's here. I already had it written down that I was going to say that. But I looked back at the Capital Projects Committee's recommendation on there and I reread it and I dissected it. And I can't see the capital projects plan happening according to this recommendation. First of all, I wrote down, it's not realistically written. And it's known that if we exceed the 3.5 for the million dollars for the stadium or the 1.5 for the band room classrooms at Elizabethan High School, then it will possibly require a property tax increase if donations do not cover the over spent monies. And this is not expected to happen if the donations haven't been raised in six years. Hopefully, it will increase. I hope so. Both projects are estimated at a higher cost of 3.5 at 4 million, 1.5 at 1,750,000. So if we aren't careful and stay within that budget, we'll end up perhaps with a property tax. The second part is that I looked at was the intention to pursue the completion of the TA Dugger Junior High School project within the next three to five years. And that can't happen unless there is a property tax increase. Now, it can be affordable if, without a property tax, in the year 2020 to 2026, which is 10 to 12 years in the future. So I think, as I read through this, I thought, hmm, I'm picking up on an undertone of it could very likely be on additional property tax increase. And of course, we don't want that to happen. And then you think when you start putting in the stadium or any project, when you get about halfway through, you think, oh, I've miscounted here, we're going to have to have more money, more funds. So if this happens with the stadium, does the board say, okay, you can go ahead and take some of the band room money and complete the stadium? Or should we ask the citizens for more tax money? We have to think, where is that money going to come from? Then it's crucial that we remember, do we need to start a four and a half million dollar project with a three and a half million dollar budget? Now, I haven't seen any architectural drawings of the band room and the classroom renovations. I did look at that picture up there. Is the cost estimate is correct? This is one project that can be completed. And the statement was made that if the board was serious about a capital project, then architectural plans would be drawn. And all we've got, all I've gotten so far have been the stadium plan. And I just would like for the band room to take more seriously, I mean, the board to take more seriously the band room, which I'm sure you do, and Elizabethan High School classrooms, and have some plans drawn and where we can look at them and think, hmm, this looks pretty good. And the only thing, I did look at that tonight and it did show the outside of the building. My thinking is to let the band room project be first and the classrooms, because there's money there to cover it, a cost of 1,750,000 dollars. And then the money that's left in the $5 million be toward a new stadium. And that's what I thought was going to happen, classroom and then the stadium. These plans that we look at, I'm concerned in that we're having to take out the track. I don't like that, and I'm sure you don't either, and some of the parking, just it looks like there are too many unknowns to this. And I have to think, what is my priority? And I know you don't like that word, but I use it so much.
I don't.
I know that I must stay within that budget or property taxes must be raised. So I've got to choose wisely because I've got all these people hoping that I will. And we can do that capital project and can do the stadium perhaps with my, oh, so, we can do both. And I have to think about the TA Dugger, that was probably the project I was most hyped for about. But it won't be done in the next three or four years. It can. But it can be done in 10 or 12 years. And my personal opinion, I'll be surprised if it's done at all. I really will. Hopefully, it will. Probably won't be around to see. But we do have alternatives that can be looked at. And if we could get some drawings, that would help me tremendously. And be sure we can stay within that cap of 3.5 and 1.5. But I still suggest that the classrooms and the band go first and then stadium second. And I did not say that because he was here. I did not know he was going to be here tonight. But that, that's what I think. I think the people would be more happy with that because you said the word classrooms. That's a magic word and it should be. And I just had to say that tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Isaacs, I have a question for you. I've reviewed some of the committee's work and I appreciate what you've done as a committee. I wasn't on the committee and wasn't always able, was not able to make this committee meeting, so I had to do some research outside. And it seems that you did your due diligence and great detail hashed out some of these. Did you talk about these issues?
Oh, yeah, we most certainly did, yes. And I'll be quite honest with you, property tax was never mentioned in any of our.
Well, property tax isn't the purview of this board.
Yeah.
Now, if the city commission chooses to raise property tax as a way of raising these funds, that's certainly up to them. I know they've indicated that they don't wish to do that. I also know that you like the word priorities, so I'm going to use those. They set priorities too and, you know, maybe electric system, maybe, you know, you used to work there, maybe, you know, roads or what have you. But there's priorities that are established and if our schools and our children are not in their top priority, it'll, it'll be, you know, shown in how much monies are available. Property tax is one way that we raise revenues, but we don't set them. We set priorities for the school system and it's very clear that that is our role and that's at least in all of the board law that I've read, we're supposed to act in the best interest of the children, the school system, and not in the necessarily, you know, whether we need to raise taxes. But we need to be responsible and try to give them what they're looking for. Now, they've been very clear with us that they don't have the monies. One of my fears has been stated that we don't have the ability to complete the projects to the level. And I certainly feel that we started with a budget that would satisfy our needs at around, what, 9 million and then it was 7 million and now it was 6.5 and 6.1 and 5.6. And, you know, we showed up for a meeting at city council and they said, okay, well, we only got five. And then, you know, only is considerably less. So now we have to establish where to start and understand that we need to do it as responsibly as we can. But my questions were, I think that these were addressed, at least from reading the minutes of those meetings and from discussions I've had with others that were on the committee, it seems like all these had been hashed out in committee. So is that correct?
That is very correct, yes.
And your recommendation was the agenda on the floor, the item on the floor. Also, some of the things you'd said, Ms. Armstrong, I wanted to ask Mr. Elliott if he minded. I see you're there. Do you mind to come forward and share with us your beliefs on this? Because I know I've spoken with you a few times about the band room. We'd had conversations about that and we certainly are very, very proud of what you're doing for our system and not just because of state championships, but because of the impact you've made on the lives of numerous students over the years. It's exemplary and I have the greatest utmost respect for you. I'd love to hear your thoughts, if you would, about this project.
If everyone would like to, I'm never hesitant to give my opinion. First of all, I would say this, and I'm flattered that Ms. Armstrong of course thinks about our music program and I think all of board members do. But I would say this, Debbie Gooch, Debbie Gooch is the vocal instructor of Elizabethan High School, and she and I work very closely together. We work as a team. I miss that. Sorry.
We work very closely as a team and we met with Mr. Weems and we, it was a very fruitful meeting, do you agree? And we both came to the conclusion with the financial constraints that we have at this time, that we felt that we could work, Debbie and I could work together, Ms. Gooch and I can work together as a team and use a new, what we call the music room, as opposed to a band room and then a choral room. We felt that if we made some adjustments to the room, that we could have a facility that could meet both of our needs and at the same time need to fit the financial constraints. Mr. Weems and Mr. Van Hus and I, along with Ms. Gooch, came up with a floor plan, the floor plan that exists right now. And we made several adjustments to that plan. And is it the best? Well, of course, it's not the best, but it's a compromise. As I think everybody understands, there was a great deal of discussion about having the money that we needed. And, and not to be rude, Mr. Alexander, but we were basically told we couldn't have the money that we needed, that we could have the money that we were allowed to have. And then from what we are allowed to have, we are basically trying to come up with the best compromise that we can come up with. So Mr. Weems, Ms. Gooch, and I came up with the original plan and we laid something out with Mr. Weems and he said, this is a workable plan. And so it was a compromise. I would rather have had what Dobbin's Bennett Band has, but the Dobbin's Bennett Band room is not within a compromise that the city gave us. This was the money that they gave us. So we came up with a compromise plan and Mr. Weems, and I'm assuming he went back to the committee, and this was basically a concept that he felt like he could afford to do with the money that we had. I'd like to say that for me personally, I would like to do all of the projects because for me, the priority is Elizabethan City Schools. It's not the priority of an athletic facility or a music facility or a classroom. So my priority is Elizabethan City Schools. But the City of Elizabethan said, this is the money that we have. So if, the way that I prioritize things, and Mr. Alexander, you're free to stop me anytime, or any of the other members, that the way that I prioritize it is the City of Elizabethan needs an athletic facility that will work for the city. And for the city, and I believed in my heart that once this is completed and once it's completed well, that everybody's going to jump on board and say, I was for this 100% all the way. Because I don't perceive this the way that a lot of people perceive this. I perceive this as an outdoor classroom. And I've said this all along. With the band, in the City of Elizabethan, the marching band is an important aspect of it. I mean, there's no way around it. We will use this on a daily basis if it's done correctly. If it's done, I won't use my normal verbiage, I'll be polite and say, if it's done halfway, then I'm not sure that we'll be able to use it every day. But if it's done in such a manner that we have facilities of storage, that we can store our instruments in that facility, we'll use that classroom every single day. And every day that we don't use it, I am confident that the Physical Education Department will be using it. They, you know, they use fields every day that are not really very appropriate because we don't have the money to do those with. So I'm confident that we'll use that. I'm also very confident that the City of Elizabethan will use the athletic facility. And I'm confident that there will be tax money brought into the town that will be positive, that would be great. But I want to speak for just a few moments, if I can step on Coach Wilson's toes for a second and he can jump up and say, hallelujah, give me the microphone, but our athletic program at the football level funds, what programs, Coach Wilson? Except basketball. And, and I can say this, many of the band students are involved in athletics as well and many, many of the students throughout the school. I think people think of this facility as it's going to be used for five Friday nights. Can you think of anything that's more funny than that statement? This is not going to be used on five Friday nights. We are, I have been promised that the band will get top priority on the use of it, but I'm not crazy. I'm going to have to make reservations, but this is going to be used all the time. This is something that the whole town is going to have a lot of pride in. This is something that we're all going to love and we're going to enjoy if it's done, in my opinion, correctly. So I perceive the stadium, and I know this is a strange thought process, but I've said it to everybody and I don't mind to say it again tonight, and I don't want to insult anyone or make anybody feel odd, but I think the stadium is a priority for us. And when I say us, I mean the band. Because we, if the stadium is done correctly, and just to be mercenary, we get, we have a contract to get all concessions and all activities that are in the stadium. It is our first refusal. That, that is a lot of money that we can, let's say there's an AAU soccer tournament that's going to be held during the summer, we'll get first refusals on that if it happens. We're going to make a lot of money off of that. So to be just perfectly, you know, mercenary about it, from that standpoint, you know, the instrumental music program will receive a lot of money from that. But we're going to use it every day as a classroom, but everybody in the school's going to be using the facility. So I'm to be, and this sounds crazy too, if I were to say what I would want to be built first, I would want there to be a stadium that is a top-notch stadium, not a halfway-done stadium, but a top-notch stadium. And I would pick that, for me, I'm not speaking for anyone else, not for the band club organization or the executive board or the citizens of Elizabethan, but for me and what my vision is for instrumental music and the band at Elizabethan High School, I would like to have a stadium that is, that fits, and, excuse me, Mike, I don't mean this, but fits the fact that we have a state champion band and stood of a stadium, and excuse me, I don't mean to be stepping on anybody's toes, that we don't even have enough bathrooms to go to. I would, I would see us hosting an event in this stadium that befits the heritage of this town and band. We've had band here since the early 30s. And our stadium at one time was a fabulous, state-of-the-art stadium. And now it is not. And it has inadequate parking and it has inadequate bathrooms. And you can trust, if you build it, if you build it and you build it right, the, we have not even thought of the uses that are going to be used for this stadium. We haven't even get, we don't know what they are because we don't have it. And I think if we have it, the uses will just multiply. And I'll just throw something out there that nobody's ever, never talked about, that East Side, West Side, and Harlem McCormick all have field days. Wouldn't it be great to have a field day on an artificial turf service with a stadium that can be locked so it's completely secure, so these children can have a great time with appropriate bathroom facilities and a concession stand and your inflatables are all put up in the stadium and it's perfectly secure? So that's something that's never been mentioned, but I know that's important because TA Dugger does the exact same thing. And it is a huge discussion where we can do it, how it is safe, how can we maintain it? And that's something that's never discussed and that's not an athletic facility, but that's now a classroom that we can secure. So to me, I look at it as, like this, if we do it right and we build it right, it's not going to be a football game stadium on Friday night. It's going to be something that we're going to be, that Mike Wilson's phone's going to be ringing all the time. How, can I use it now? This is what I want to do. So this is my thought process on it. I do want a band room. I would like a statue of me doing this and, you know, or maybe like this, because that would be more appropriate. But with that said, But, with that said, I have a band room that we've won three state champions in. Could I, would I like a better one? Absolutely. Would Debbie like to have something better? Absolutely. But Debbie also is a realist, and she knows that when she sings the Star Spangled Banner in that stadium in front of 12,000 people, that's gonna have some impact, too, in her, with her program. So, Debbie and I are more than welcome to work together as a team. We've only been doing it for 22 years. We'll continue to work together as a team, and we'll take the facility that we've got, because we're willing to compromise, because the city has told us, "This is what you can have." So, we're willing to compromise. But if anybody wants to step up and give us more money, we'll be more than glad to fulfill the dreams that we want. But, for me, I do see the athletic facility as a top priority for the band program, because I think my students deserve to march in a stadium on Friday night that actually has a bathroom, that actually their parents can come and find a place to park, and they can all sit on the home side and see their game, see the performance, because as it stands right now, many of my parents come and watch the football performance from the back of the field. Have you ever watched a band performance from the back of the field? Oh, yeah, it's a really exciting event. So, my parents, a lot of my parents don't see the show for the first time till they go to a band contest, 'cause there's nowhere to sit. Because how long is the waiting list, Mike, for?
I saw four sets, five sets of tickets this year, four of them, people have been on waiting lists for five years. And so, it's packed up, three, four, five years. I've got the folder in the office, and there's nothing, people's names and numbers, season tickets. And probably some of the kids are graduating, and they're not on the list. The point is, every year, any child in the band, football program, cheerleading, those stage graders and parents are called, and it's all the time. In fact, I've got seven stage graders here, saying, "What are your names?" Something like that, it's four, five years late. And it truly is. So, I've got a large folder full of names, and those are people who are going to pay us money upfront for tickets, and rain or shine, they've bought the tickets, and they're gonna be buying things for your benefit.
They better buy a lot. Now, I wanna say something, I'm gonna put Mr. Alexander on the spot. How many times have I said to you, "I don't want a new band room"? A bunch of times. I've said it a bunch of times. Seriously.
Yes, you have. Yes, you have.
And what have I always said to you? What have I always said to you?
That it was a community project that you focused on first that would help your program, as well as Ms. Gooch's. Absolutely.
That's right. I've said on numerous times, now, do I want a new band room?
Absolutely.
Do I want the best band room that can be built?
Absolutely.
But I work in Elizabethan, and I can't have the best built room that's gonna be built, can I?
It's gonna be nice.
But it's gonna be nice. And Mr. Alexander says to me all the time, "I don't care what you want, we're building a new band room." How many times have you said that to me?
I've said that enough.
And I said, "But I don't want a new band room." And you said, "What?"
I didn't know that you were paying attention when I said that.
And he calls me a smart Alexander. How many times have I said to you, "I would rather have a new stadium"?
You always said that. That's consistent with what you've said.
And I, you always respond by saying, "I don't care what you want, you're gonna have a new band room." Correct?
Okay.
So, Mr. Alexander's on board with the fact that, when it's all said and done, we'll have a new, and we need to quit calling it a band room, okay? We need to quit calling that, because it's gonna be Ms. Gooch and I's room, so it's gonna be the music room. So, he's on board that we're gonna have a new music room. And Mr. Weems is on board that he can make it work for both of us. And he's on, and Mr. Weems is on board on a lot of the things that we can do on the new classrooms. And we can do this, and I don't wanna step on anybody's toes, but if, Mr. Alexander said to me one time, and I thought he was ready to smack me when I said it, he said, "You know, we're gonna put new turf, we're gonna put new sod on the band practice field sometime in the future." And I looked at him, and I said, "I'm 55." And he said, "There's a big meeting," and he went, "Pardon me?" And I said, "I'm 55. What's the future?" And he went, "Well, sometime really soon." And I went, "I'm 55." And he said, "What do you mean?" I said, "I'm going to die. If you don't do it in a certain amount of time, I'm going to die." And he did it the next year. I think he got the idea, you know, he's looking bad. He's looking bad, I gotta, so if we wait a long time, we're gonna be dead. I just think we oughta bite the bullet, cut the dog's tail off in one whack, and let's get this done, let's do it right, and then everybody can walk around saying, "This is awesome! I was for it all along!" And, you know, I, you know, to me, that's just the way I feel, because my students have a tremendous amount of pride when they put on that band uniform, and I just have in my mind, I've just got this vision in my mind, opening night in the stadium, we walk out of the new music room, and we march into the new stadium, and we're wearing our competition whites, and everybody goes, "It is great to be alive in Elizabethan." So, that's just what I see. That's my vision. I can talk for another six or seven hours, but I will mercifully shut up now. So, that's my thought. So, does anybody have anything that you would like to, they're writing me about?
Any more questions for me, Mr. Elliott?
No, you're up.
I didn't know you were gonna do that.
Yeah, I know, I know. I, you know, I say this to Mr. Alexander all the time, and I'll say it to everybody, and I don't care, and, and Mr. Alexander and I have an understanding, I don't think Mr. Alexander is always right, but I don't think he's never always wrong. And I think, in this fact, he has a vision that he wants to do this, and sometimes, following the guy with the vision is a nice way to go. I'm not saying you're always right, but I think he's got a vision, and I think sometimes, following the guy with the vision may not always be right, but it's never wrong. So, if somebody's leading on, and if it doesn't turn out, what can we do? We can all blame him. It's worked out perfect. You know what I'm saying? You know what I'm saying, Mr. Alexander? Okay. So, anyway, I think that we can make the thing work with Mr. Weems, with the band and the choir. It's a compromise, it's not the best, but that's not our decision. The city's already made that decision for us. So, so I think it's a compromise, I think it'll work, but I can see that a new stadium benefiting more students than we think it will, and the city more than you think it will, and I think that the stadium is not going to cost us anything, because I think eventually, it will be a moneymaker for the city. That's my thought.
And I wanna share with you, at the state band competition, I met a school board member from another school district who said if, they saw I had a Cyclones hat on, and they said, "Oh, you're from the Betsy Band." Now, this was someone from West Tennessee, and they said, "If, you must have a great stadium for them to practice in." And I said, "Actually, they have a practice field with lines you can't see." And I said, "I don't know how they do it." And they said, "You're kidding. If we had that band in our town, we would build them a stadium just for them." I'm no kidding, they told me this. And I said, "You must be in a special school district." And she said, "I am, 'cause in a special school district, you can raise your own taxes and funds and set them." And I'm no kidding, they said that. She goes, "We are in a special school district." And so, I thought that was very interesting, that they would've given you their own band, but don't go, don't plan to go there. Not gonna give it to you.
He doesn't remember. He doesn't remember that.
Coach Wilson, he, clearly, you probably wouldn't change priorities, but do you have anything that you would like to say in terms of priorities there for me? Because I wasn't at a lot of the committees, so I'm curious what each of you thought.
Well, I don't, I'm willing to, I don't like to talk about priorities, no, we have to. I mean, I don't like thinking, "Well, we're gonna favor this group of children over that group of children. We wanted to do it all, we can't." I do think that when you, if you try to get two of the three projects done, realistically, the music room and the stadium are the two that I believe we can make happen right now under the conditions that we have. I don't think you could do the TA Duggar project in any one of the other two. And Mr. Weems, I don't wanna speak for him, but I asked him directly, the riskiest, the most risky project of the group, as far as cost overruns, and he said, "Clearly, TA Duggar is the riskiest project of the three." I just believe that, you know, even if we need a little more money, I believe with all my heart, we'll get it, because I think when the citizens in this town, if you were at South Friday night, it was unbelievable the number of people we had in that stadium. And I believe if they know that we're serious about doing these things, and I'm gonna tell you, there's a lot of pride in this town toward our band, and our athletic program, and academics. I mean, we're one of five schools, exemplary status, because three out of the last four years, we're band state champion. Our football team's known across the state, everybody knows about our football team, and, and, you know, all of our athletic program is really good. We have a wonderful system. I can't imagine anybody that wouldn't want their child to be here and go to school here and have what we have, and do the things that we do. It is amazing what a town this size. And I'm not from Elizabethan. You know, I've lived here for the last 30 years, but I was not born and raised in Elizabethan. And to see what this town does with limited resources is unbelievable. To get back to your question, I think we oughta get two projects done now. I think realistically, we can do the music room and the stadium. I agree with Mr. Elliott that there're gonna be so many people, they're gonna see what we do and think that it's wonderful when they get there. When it's, when it's all here, I think folks are gonna be very happy about it. And I do think that we'll have a lot of opportunities to serve a lot of children. We're talking about every, every young person that's in the band. Mr. Elliott, it used to be fourth grade, what period did you have band in?
Third.
Third, they can go out, practice their show with the lines, very exact, everything's gonna be great. We've got football players, soccer players, you've got the kids that come over from the youth league that will play there on Saturdays. It's, I think it's just gonna be unbelievable, the number of people that this facility will touch. I think it's a great investment. I don't know, you know, moneymaker, yeah, it's gonna make more money than what we're making now, I guarantee you that, 'cause we can get more people in there, we're gonna make more money. But, it's gonna touch a lot of people. And I think Perry is correct, that we have no idea the impact that this thing will have down the road. And I just feel like our kids deserve, and what our band does, and what our athletes do, and they're student athletes, those band kids are students, it's not like we're neglecting academics here. I mean, you know, one of five exemplary schools in the state. I just think they deserve it. They deserve better than where we play now. And I know people have memories, you know, I grew up in Bristol, and ran track in the stone castle, and watched football games there, and I understand that, and I understand people's memories were made in those special places. We're not looking to destroy a memory. We just wanna give kids today a decent place to make their own memories. That's all we're doing. We can't crush anyone's memories. You know, we just, we just want a good place, a good, safe place. And I say that in all seriousness, 'cause I don't think our stadium's safe. I might be at a football game one night, and part of the wall on the visitor's side where the cheerleaders are collapses. I've been inside those dressing rooms and seen that mess in there, parts of the ceiling falling down, landing 15 feet in front of Coach Pierce one day. Our kids deserve a nice, clean, safe place to work in band, work in athletics. Our town deserves a stadium that's comparable to the quality of the band and the athletic teams that we have. But we, our kids deserve that.
I think the town deserves this.
Like, it's not from me.
You were on the committee?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Isaacs, and I don't know, Mr. Weems, and I don't know, Miss Booer, I know you looked at a lot of those things, but one of the things we charged you with looking at was the refurbishment of the TA Duggar Stadium, the Brown Childress. And it's my understanding that that was cost prohibitive. Is that correct?
Mr. Weems could address that better than I. I can, and I'll let him talk, but I can tell you that he told us that if you go in there and you move those bleachers, you have to bring that stadium up to code. And we had talked earlier about the cost, you can't imagine what it costs with concession stands and restrooms having to be brought up to code. And quite frankly, if I wanna, I don't wanna, don't wanna mention anyone in particular, but if you go in there and you knock down that home stand, and you put some bleachers in there that aren't up to what they oughta be, and you halfway redo it, that's a step that, that's even going backwards. And, and I know I've heard people say, "Well, I've not heard a lot of people say they're for the stadium." Well, I have. I deal with those people every day, buying tickets. And I just think the last thing you wanna do is look like you went in there and threw lipstick on a pig, and tried to create something up there. It would just, that to me, would be the biggest disaster that you could ever do. The worst mistake, in my opinion, that you could ever make, for whatever my opinion's worth, is to go in there and knock down that home stand, and bring a bunch of bleachers in there. And I just think we, I think we'd frankly get laughed out of town. I really did. I think people would scratch their heads and say, "I cannot believe they did this." I, to me, that idea is absurd on its face, and I think Mr. Weems will, it's probably cost prohibitive.
I would like to hear from Mr. Weems. Number one, about that, and number two, if you could address whether or not the motion on the floor is realistic, if it's a realistic estimate of close.
Before Mr. Weems speaks, and I'll be glad to hear him speak, that as far as what project we start first of all, that's gonna be determined by Mr. Weems. A lot of the things that the committee looked at are proposals. The budgets are proposals. Until we actually approve this and allow him to start drawing up some plans that we're able to put out for bid, that's when we'll know how much these projects are gonna cost. Hopefully, we'll stay within our budget, if not, like Mr. Wilson said, hopefully, once we make this commitment, and some folks will see that we're serious about this, and wanna step up to the plate and make this as nice a projects, both of these projects, as we can possibly get for our money. But, the process is just getting, once we, if we approve this, now, it's just getting started. Our challenges become Mr. Weems's challenges, as far as trying to hit our numbers with our budget, but until, and these jobs may be, these projects may be done simultaneously for cost effectiveness, economies of scales that we may be able to rob from this one and do this one, and use the same contractors, and we're talking about the idea of using a project manager to work with Mr. Weems to help keep these costs within our budget. So, these projects could be done simultaneously, but until we turn Mr. Weems loose, you know, we can't get anything started. So, Mr. Weems, if you'd like to, you know, add to that, or take away, or add to our discussion, feel free, but, you know, we're gonna complete two of these three projects.
I'd like to answer your question, if you could ask it one more time.
The TA Duggar, the Brown Childress refurbishment was one of the things the committee looked at, and it was my understanding that it was cost prohibitive to do so, was what the committee's opinion was. Is that correct?
I'll let Ed speak to the details. CHS boards, working with us to help get this information together. The cost to refurbish Brown Childress is about the same as to build a new stadium. It's slightly less, but about the same. The difference would be the end result. The layout of the stadium at Brown Childress and available space does not allow for adequate sightlines for bleachers. You've got bleacher section four and five of the back of end zone to back of end zone.
Okay. All right. That's what I had understood.
... space for concession stands, the adequate bathrooms. So, to think you could take that stadium and spend three and a half, four million dollars and end up with a state-of-the-art stadium, it's just not realistic.
Okay. And then, the second was, you know, our proposal is, the item on the floor is, approve the Capitol Project Committee's recommendation for the EHS campus, so that administrative staff might proceed with designated projects in the amount of $3.5 million, not to exceed bond monies received from the City of Elizabethan for the stadium, and $1.5 million not to exceed bond monies received from the City of Elizabethan for the band room, with the intention to pursue from the accrued half-cent sales tax monies, the completion of TA Duggar Junior High School project within the next three to five years. Is that in the ballpark? Is it somewhere that we, can we work with those numbers at all, or are we wasting our time?
Our charge, our charge's a little bit different than the conversation I've heard tonight. Our charge was to help you develop a roadmap to use the money that's been allocated in the best way to accomplish as many of your goals as you can. And so, without the passion, the emotion of what goes first, or second, or third, we simply looked at the jobs based on the size, the scope, the cost, the risk, and said, "You do this first, you do this second, you do this third, this is your best chance of achieving all three goals." all three goals. You can look at the numbers the same as I do, the cost of stadium's at four million dollars, you're going to spend three and a half. Obviously, we've done our work, you're going to have to do some work on your end to close that gap. But to accomplish the three goals that have been laid out, I think the roadmap that's been put before you, stadium, music facility, TA Dugger, in that order is the best chance you have to accomplish your goals.
And so TA Dugger, you made the recommendation that the classrooms there would come later. As I understand that, is related to remodel versus new construction, is that part of that, or do I understand that right?
I'm not sure I really understand the question you're trying to ask, but if it's the financing part of the third base, that's not my role to answer, that's not an architect question, so I can't address that.
Maybe Phil, you were at the committee, did, how come we, the committee came up with this recommendation and put TA Dugger as the third item?
Well, basically, we had three projects, not enough money to fund the three projects, so we looked, okay, what two projects can we complete, and the third one, hopefully at a later time. So in doing so, with, help Mr. Weems with his numbers, we looked at possibly getting these two done, and then hopefully in the next three to five years, some of the bond money will be paid back and will roll off, and there'll be an opportunity to revisit the bond market, hopefully in three to five years, to be able to get enough money to look at possibly doing the TA Dugger project.
And that being from?
And the TA Dugger project having the most risk kind of scares the committee, seemed before the fact that, you know, it could be two, it could be three, it could be three and a half. So we didn't see putting it into the equation, getting it and another project completed because there was too many unknowns. And some things had to happen at TA Dugger before we could do the addition to the back, and we explored that and had quite a lot of discussion about the placement of the classrooms at the rear of TA Dugger, which would infringe on the stadium, and we, a lot of the codes we wouldn't be able to meet. So therefore, with the unknowns at TA Dugger and going and doing the other two projects, we felt more comfortable recommending that because we felt like that was something we really could finish and complete, with the hopes of coming back in three to five years. And we, and doing these projects will lay the footprint to be able to do other projects as we go down the road.
I understand. That's consistent with what has been our capital projects plan for years, was disorder for this reason, that we can't infringe upon the grass from the stadium and from the school classrooms.
One of the things that you mentioned about the three to five years, and Ms. Armstrong alluded to this, one of the really nice things about having the committee is we had people from different, basically different stockholders, people are looking at this from different points of view. And one of our committee members is a banker, and it was his idea that he knew when the bonds were going to, would be maturing, and it was his suggestion, and he spoke with Mr. Kitchens and with the city council members, that in three to five years, these bonds would mature to the point that we could revisit the bond market. So that was one of the nice things about having a businessman be there, because I don't always think about things like that. And that gives us the opportunity, because, let's be realistic, you can only do so many things at one time anyway. So we could do these two, we can start soon with the idea that hopefully if everything smiles on us, we could use the stadium by playoffs, maybe next year, if everything aligned properly, and maybe it doesn't, but this is our best bet effort to get that to happen. Might not, but doing nothing about it certainly isn't going to get us there. But, you know, like when we did the, about a few years ago, we got the first half cent sales tax money, we did projects as they came up, and we were able to do east side, but kind of because of the way the economy fell into place. So by getting two of the three finished, then in about three to five years, that would be about the time we'd be ready to start another project. TA Dugger has the opportunity by moving the stadium that we can get it ready. So the idea of revisiting the bond issue in three to five years came from someone who lives in that world and we don't, so that's kind of, and nowhere ever did we ever talk about property taxes. Anything that this school system has done, I've been on the board for seven years, any money that this school system has spent has been on the half cent sales tax money. We have never, ever had to ask for property tax. And I want people to understand that we, I think that's never the intention. We, the citizens voted that half cent sales tax money for the school system for this very purpose. And I hope the city allows us to use that until we have no more projects left. And I'm sure that's going to be a while.
Is there any reason you couldn't start with the bandroom and those classrooms at Elizabethan High School, since you were planning on maybe the two projects there?
That's prob, that's not our call as far as this board. We hired an expert back here, and he's looked at all these projects in depth, and we're looking to him as to what direction we go to, as for where do we start, but all I know is our main goal is to finish and complete these two projects.
I think we just heard from Mr. Elliott, who said, I want the stadium first, is what I've summarized.
And we can start on the stadium now because it doesn't interfere with teaching. Obviously, you would have to look at when you would start working at the high school, you know, because you don't want to interfere with, you know, that's kind of one of those things where other people are going to tell us when we could start that, but, you know, as far as the stadium, it's out there on a parking lot, so we're not bothering classroom activity. You mentioned we were going to lose parking spaces, yes, but the additional parking that's going to come in the back, I think that you said actually it would give us ninety more spaces. So we're not losing parking, we're gaining parking. I told them in the committee meeting, I happen to be one of those lucky parents who come every afternoon to pick up a child, and I park in student parking, and the idea of taking half those students and moving them somewhere else makes me very happy, because my daughter starts driving there this spring. I would like for half this, you know, take half those student parkers and put them in two different locations, because trying to get out two exits, oh, you know, it's interesting.
Would you be moved to baseball field?
Nope, baseball field stays. And that's the really cool thing, you mentioned track, and Mr. Vanhus has been absolutely adamant about this, and I've appreciated this so much. We don't want to hurt any other sports in building this stadium. So, you know, initially it was that we were going to put the stadium where the track was, then we realized we couldn't afford that. So we're leaving track where it is. That track is no better off, it's not worse. But we can, hopefully, with much less money, we can go back in, we can make the corrections. I think there's a few repairs that have to be made at the stadium and resurf, you know, track and resurface it, and track will have its own facility. What we're looking at doing, why it was never our original intention, I absolutely love it, because when this is all said and done, and hopefully it'll be within a reasonable timeframe, it depends on how things play out, but softball has a field, baseball has a field, football and softball, and soccer have a field, and when we get the track up and running, track has their own facilities, there can be things going on simultaneously, but track is not going to be losing out, I mean, like, we're not going to take their space, we're going to leave the footprint for the track, and then hopefully down the road, you know, take care of that particular sport. But I love the layout, I think there are so many great things about this, but baseball, you know, we're not going to be infringing on the baseball field.
And you leave the same amount of money estimated in the budget, in the five billion dollars for the bandroom, the one million, seven hundred?
1.5 for the bandroom, 3.5. 1.5 for band, 3.5 for stadium.
And I would say, never once in our committee discussions did anybody say, let's take the five billion dollars and spend it all on the stadium. That was never an option, that was never suggested or recommended, it was always, let's see what two projects we complete, and have something that our community and our children will be proud of. I know from the financial standpoint, we're pushed to the limits with our budget, but I still feel, and we've heard some other folks mentioning that, that once we make a commitment, the city council has made a commitment with half cent sales tax, they've done that, we make our commitment that there will hopefully be some folks that will come forward and help us complete these projects so that they'll be very, they'll be complete, and they'll be very nice, and it'll be something where I'm proud of.
I want to remind the board members who went to the city council meeting, the time that they met with the board and asked us about this and explored the bonds, and during that discussion, it's been stated that they said that we promised, that there are people who think that we promised the classrooms at TA Dugger first. I don't ever recall that was ever stated, but I, what I recall very clearly was that they said, if we get you the money, will you establish priorities and determine how to use this money? And we had said, we will look at all those priorities, including classrooms and athletic facilities and that sort of thing. And then later, it seemed to be discussed as if it was the other way around. I know for a fact that we never said what order, because we said, give us the money, we'll sit down and have the tough discussions. And I appreciate those of you who've been to the committee meetings, because it sounds like you've done the tough discussions. And so I don't have any really, any further questions, it sounds like you've done your due diligence. I appreciate you tolerating me questioning you and interrogating each of you tonight.
I attended the meetings, and of course, I'm one of those that would like to have the classrooms, I think it falls on the board as to what item we do first. And I feel that our main discussion at the very beginning was classrooms. And when we requested the funds from council, I think our main discussion was classrooms. And in doing so, and as far as what we're requesting, we'll still be doing it, but I would like to see us do the classrooms first and then go to the stadium. And that way, it shows that whether you said stadium priority, but if we had said stadium priority when it was discussed with the council, I'm not sure that they would have come through with the funds as quickly or tried to arrive at them. So out of this, I would like to see the classrooms first and then the stadium.
I've been to every meeting that we've had with city council. We've always approached this, and Mr. Elliott, and I agree on this, the priority has always been the three projects. We voted on these three projects in April of 2011, the board voted three, two, that the priorities would be the athletic complex, TA Dugger, and that's the two-story classroom that's on the back, and the, now we're calling it the music room. Mr. Burtzfield was one of the folks that served on the board at that time. We have never, ever deviated from that with council, and we've always said the three projects. We've also been very clear that there would be an order to them. It may not be the order we want, but TA Dugger just cannot be completed until we make changes at the stadium, and they've known that. It is what it is. We, you know, we ask for enough to do all three projects very well. That was nine million dollars. Then it became seven, Dr. May talked about that, we go to a meeting thinking nine, it's seven. They said, can you still do this? And we said, yes, we think we can work and try to make all three at seven. We have five. I'm not a math major, but I can subtract, and that means five million says you can't do three projects. So we tried to make the, do the best we can. To be really honest, we've not spent very much money at our upper schools, we've not spent very much at the high school at all. TA Dugger's had different things over the years. But Coach Wilson's right, our kids deserve this, and we can talk about this all day. It took us this long to get to this point, and we can debate it forever, but at the end of the day, we have an opportunity tonight to do something that's going to benefit our, not only our students, but our town. Mr. Elliott talked about that over and over again. This is an outdoor classroom, and this is just, I've never been more positive that this is the right thing to do. And I believe that when we do this, everyone's going to just, again, think it was the greatest thing, and I believe in about three or five years, when we can, I believe we go back and we say, we need, you know, half cent sales tax money extended, and we need to finish TA Dugger. And then who knows what's going to be after that, and that'll be another board's decision down the road. But this has been looked at for years. I know that Mr. Vanhus cannot wait to quit working about, talking about this, I think he's sick to death of it. So basically, as a board, we have a decision if we are going to move ahead, if we were given five million, we have come up with a way to get two of the projects done. Does it make everybody happy? Of course not. But at the end of the day, we are charged as a board to make the best decision we can. We are not the funding body, we were given five million. I believe that Mr. Vanhus, Mr. Weems, Mr. O'Hare have given us a good starting point. We'll work together with you, we will drive everybody in town crazy, and you're exactly right, it's up to us to make up the difference. And if there was one thing, I was born and raised in this town, and if there's one thing I recognize, that if people in this town want something, they make it happen. If anybody went to the race for Wondell, you know that when this town puts its mind to something, we can do just about anything. And I'm convinced we'll get this done, and it's going to be done well, and I think it may exceed our expectations. And I know that different people have said, I haven't talked to anybody who's for this stadium, I have talked to everybody. And people just think it's happening at football games, everybody just assumes we're going to do this because they can't imagine why we wouldn't. So I think it's time that, board, I think it's time that we decide, and because we can talk about this or not, so I think it's time that, unless anybody else has anything else to say, I think it's time that we vote on this, vote yes, vote no, and let's make a decision.
Before you vote, could I request that we get a architectural drawing of the band and the classrooms renovations, just so I get a picture in my mind of what it's?
We have, we have these plans, and these have been part of the capital plan that we took to the city three, four years ago, whenever we, as a matter of fact, I'm looking at this drawing, and it has a date of July the 19th, 2011. So we have, we have the same thing for the bandroom, drawing wise, that we do for the stadium. We have exactly the same thing. There's, it's conceptual drawings, and that's exactly where we are, is that not correct? So, I mean, what you see here and what the board has had from us, multiple times, we've given you this information. I'm confident of that, I can say that with 100% assurance, that we've given this to every board member multiple times, that's what we have at this point.
Everybody's had it over and over again.
Yeah, that, the packet that was bound, this has been in that from the get-go, this has been, been in there, along with the TA Dugger drawings and the stadium drawings.
The packet I gave you at one of our committee meetings had, one of the packets that I gave you at the committee meetings had, yes, they should have the bandroom and the classrooms.
I was, I was.
The only thing I would ask is, after the vote is taken tonight, that this board will get together behind these projects, and I would like for the community to get behind this board and administration in support of the projects that we're trying to accomplish and what we're trying to do. I think everybody will be proud of it once it's all said and done.
I would really like to see us unanimous on this. I think it would be very good if we could, it's a historic moment for the city, and it would be nice if this board had hashed out all the pluses and minuses of the various sides, and we've looked at it from every angle, there's, there's a clear path.
Be ready to vote?
Yeah. The only thing I'm saying, I wasn't referring back to TA Dugger, I was just saying, in doing this, that we would like to do that music room first, in keeping in mind that, you know, what we originally went for.
Well, in doing that, Mr. Weems and our project manager, once they really get into the nuts and bolts and start doing the drawings and pick these things out for bids, then it's going to be up to us to approve these bids when they come before us, before we actually turn the first dirt clock. So right now, we just need to get Mr. Weems the okay to do the drawings so that we can put these things out for bid. Now whether we can do these simultaneously, and if there's some cost effectiveness, you know, Mr. Weems and the project manager can help us and direct us with those. And it may be, but, you know, that's something that we need to let, give him, you know, the reins and let him come back to us when he gets some of these drawings, and we got to put these things out for bid. And until we do that, then it's going to be up to us to approve these bids once they're brought before the board.
The only thing I'm saying too, in putting them up for bids, of course, Mr. Weems agreed that, I believe it's a nice meeting, that, you know, it may be another company that may do it, and he said it wouldn't hurt his feelings, but of course, we're going to look for the most economical and feasible way in doing this, so.
We may be pleasantly surprised and have some really hungry contractors out there, and some of these bids come in there, and we're really pleasantly surprised.
Let's get the ball rolling.
But we don't know till we get started. We've got to get started.
May I say that I've made five presentations in front of the city council over a period of six years related to this situation, and I need to say, looking at the drawing over here, we are talking about classrooms at Elizabethan High School. So under those circumstances, we would be working on classrooms. So under those circumstances, we would be working on classrooms there to accommodate those kids as they come up from junior high. Also, the mayor himself has made the statement, verbatimly, that priority doesn't necessarily mean the order of completion. He said that himself. So under those circumstances, folks, I would like to say that I don't think some people realize how special a circumstance we have here with, as Mr. Elliott was showing there, there is a relationship between fine arts and athletics that doesn't exist anywhere else. And all that does is make our academic segment of our schools even stronger. And so, most systems, as the comments have been made, don't, don't have that cooperation and that willingness to work together. I'm saying, yes, this is better than this special. And I think that by voting for moving on these plans, it will show the trust that you have and the appreciation for what these, just in this last week, what these, the band and the football team have done. So how can you reward them with what they've done? By voting to move ahead to support them in these projects.
So, everybody ready? Item on this floor is to approve the capital project committee's recommendation for the EHS campus so that the administrative staff might proceed with a designated project in the amount of $3.5 million, not to exceed bond monies received from the City of Elizabethan for the stadium, and $1.5 million not to exceed bond monies received from the City of Elizabethan for the bandroom, with the intention to pursue from the accrued half-cent sales tax money, the completion of T.A. Dugger Junior High School project within the next three to five years. Mrs. Perkins, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am, gladly. Mrs. Armstrong?
I'm going to vote against the recommendation.
Mrs. Baker?
I'm voting for it, but with the exception that I'd like to have the classrooms first at the high school.
Mr. Isaacs?
Yes.
Dr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Brewer?
Absolutely.
Four, four, one against.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Coach. Next regularly scheduled board meeting, as a little bit of a change, it's going to be next Thursday afternoon, November 14th, at four o'clock, followed by city council meeting that evening. Thank you all very much. Mr. Wright, you're about to jump out of your seat. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Good evening.
Oh.